I'll call the meeting to order, please rise. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward advised by the Nebraska Open Beans Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Beans Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of the recording process is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Representatives shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record, and our ask limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by the many appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Alyssa Hendricks.
Here.
Matt Streisand.
Here.
John Singleton. Carl Miller.
Here.
Jessica Coulterman.
President.
Sid Camprith.
Here.
Ellen Beck.
Here.
Jonathan Wilken.
Here.
Alright, the first item this evening is the draft minutes of March first, 2022. Move to approve. Motion and second is in discussion. Yes, Greg.
I'm gonna announce him for you, just so it's on the record.
Okay.
Moved by Streisand, second by Wilken.
Ready for discussion? Seeing none, the rest of your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor of Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Alright, next we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Oh, sorry, you want me to hear?
That's alright, moved by Jessica, or moved by Coulterman, second by Miller.
Motion and a second, is any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Alright, uh, next we have, we have one appointment, this is Kevin Sagehorn, uh, to the LP forty sales tax application review board for a term of three years.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Beck, second by Streisand.
The motion and second is in for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Alright, uh, first public hearing this evening is consideration of a resolution approving the redevelopment plan amendment for these project, Superior Redevelopment Project. Greg. You wanna do this?
Postpone.
If I can do, okay.
Yep.
You need an announcement?
Yeah, that item, if you're here for it, is postponed, I believe, till the April meetings. So, we'll take those up then. They also have to see it at the Planning and Zoning Commission and the CRA.
Alright, uh, item number two, public hearing, an ordinance approving the preliminary and final plat of Bluff Road acres. Greg.
That one's for Tim.
I got it.
Tim there?
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. Uh, this is a joint subdivision and rezone application, it's going to be a two-hearing, uh, deal. The first is a review of the preliminary final plat of Bluff Road acres. The subdivision's an application to divide an eighty-acre parcel situated in the ETJ, or the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Seward outside the city limits. It's at the corner of two hundred and fifty-second and Bluff Road, the southeast corner. Uh, it's going to plat it into six five-plus acre lots and two twenty-plus acre lots. The property is not served by utilities, uh, nor does it require the extension of utilities and/or streets. Each property would require individual water and sewage systems as permitted by the state of Nebraska. We did not require a storm drainage plan, as in rural properties, generally drainage is done over land, uh, using the contours of the land. Uh, the planning commission did address three minor concerns. The first being the number of driveways exiting off of Bluff Road. Uh, we did submit the plat to Terry Wick of the, the Seward County Highway Superintendent. He did not see an issue with it. He did note that each driveway would require a permit to the county for review so that they could follow up on placement along the lot, so they didn't end up with two of them next to each other, or whatever the case is. Uh, the next concern was available water. Uh, Mr. Katon supplied a copy of the well counts in the area, along with the details of those wells existing. Chairman Wallman stated that it would be very difficult to guarantee that every lot would have water and that it would be up to, basically, buyer beware, do your homework before you buy the lot and, and do your research, see if there's water. Uh, the third was best use practice. And looking at the property, it's kind of a hilly, uh, little bit of a rolling hill. There's quite a bit of drainage and grassways running through the property. Uh, it's not completely farmable, so they felt it would make a better residential location than farmland. And with that, they recommended the plats nine oh.
Thanks, so any questions for Tim? Yes, Alan.
Tim, on the buyer beware well issue?
Mm-hmm.
So, a buyer would be interested, what kind of due diligence would they do, and what would be the cost of that?
Well, they'd have to get a hold of it. Ernst's well supplied the information around there, and they're pretty confident there's water there. How much is hard to say without them drilling. You know, you'd almost have to install all eight wells, uh, to guarantee there was water. And we don't, we don't, any rural residential doesn't do that anywhere. Every, every rural residential do your homework and make sure there's water there before you buy, basically.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Are the existing, uh, homeowners around the area, are they protected, are their wells protected?
I couldn't tell you, I, I, that I don't know. I, I would guess not.
So, so if they registered their well, they don't have any recourse if their wells dry out?
That-
They have to, have to re-grill them?
That, I, I'm not familiar with that, you know, all that, all our well stuff is permitted by the state of Nebraska, and everything's registered with the state of Nebraska.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know what happens beyond that point, if, if they have an issue.
I thought it was the NRD.
Or NRD, or whoever. Whoever, whoever gives the well permits, so, yeah. NDE, or whatever, NRD, whoever it is.
Not us.
Not us. Not the city of Seward. We, we do not do anything with wells outside the city, whether-
I think maybe residential drinking is state and farm is NRD.
That's correct.
That could be, yeah.
And Tim, this is really coming before us because it's within the two-mile jurisdiction.
Two-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, right. So, even though it's in our two-mile, we do not govern wells, that's, that's all done by the state.
That's what I-
At this time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from, from the public wishes to comment on item number two, please come forward this time. State your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Thomas Katon, eleven nineteen Augusta Drive. Um, so, I'm doing this project, uh, with my, uh, partner Brock Henderson, and so, uh, essentially, both him and I would eventually plan on moving out there, we're both Seward residents. Um, but, uh, we're also obviously splitting off six, um, five-acre parcels as well, um, to be able to sell off. Uh, so it's kind of a nice little, um, little residential project, um, you know, that would obviously benefit Seward and, um, you know, bring people hopefully from outside. Josh is here, he's actually around the Hickman area, and, um, you know, he's one of the, um, folks that are interested in moving his family here, um, to Seward because of this project, and so, um, so yeah, I mean, obviously, I think it's a, it's a good project for Seward and, um, you know, just here, I guess, for, for any questions for you guys.
I have a question for you, Thomas. Do you, like, on these lot seven and eight, are those planned for residents as well? Like, will you be building houses on lot seven and lot eight?
Yeah.
And then twenty-acre parcels of stuff? Okay. Then, are there easements that are filed along with this then, to give access, since it's inside a quarter?
Well, can you take it from two fifty-two road?
Yeah, so basically, the, the six, the six five-acre lots, um, will have access off of Bluff Road. Um, and then the one other twenty-five-acre parcel, um, will have access off of Bluff. And then, um, the other twenty-five-acre parcel, um, on the south side, uh, will have access off the two fifty-second. And, and so, we've talked to the, um, the county, and, uh, it sounds like all those drives would be permitted. And, uh, so I think the only easements that are there, um, there's a, at the bottom of the hill of two fifty-second, there used to be a bridge there, um, and they replaced it with, like, a box culvert. Um, and so there's just basically an easement, um, under a certain elevation, so that, basically, we don't disturb that natural drainage way, essentially. Otherwise, it'd be about the end of the easement.
Make my answer close. Uh, we did, uh, inc- incorporate easements on the plat as you looked at it. Uh, as a rural property, we are not required to have easements. But in this case, in the advent of future development, uh, especially coming from the south potentially, we wanted to make sure that there were accesses should anything ever happen, and, uh, we needed accesses to those properties. So we did include easements on there.
Any other questions or comments from the council? For Thomas, if not. Thank you, Thomas. Anyone else from the public wish to, to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
Joshua, ten twenty-five Cypress Stick in Nebraska. I'm here with Kelly, hopefully he doesn't rat me out there. Um, yeah, I grew up around Columbus, and, uh, me and my family just kinda really wanna get this direction. I still have family up there, uh, grew up coming down to Seward all the time for C Club tournaments at Concordia. Just really love the community and look forward to hopefully moving here. It's, uh, the council's pleasure to approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, want, anyone else in the public, yes, Jonathan. Welcome.
Hello, Diane Hofer, fifteen forty-five two fifty-second. Uh, I live, uh, across from there, my property would about on the southwest. My well is four hundred feet deep, as are almost all of my neighbors. At least one of my neighbors had to drill three times, so definitely buyer beware on the wells. Uh, water between Seward and Garland is, uh, continuing problem, so I think that's gonna be a future issue for the council to consider as you go out that way. When you look from Seward to Garland, there are very few center pivots, there's just really no water to be found there. Um, the presence of the waterway with, uh, sewer systems is a concern, and I know they're gonna have to meet the state requirements for that as well. Uh, two fifty-second currently, after the recent rains, has about twenty-five percent of that mile has gravel on it. So there's a lot of traffic on that road, and adding more traffic without the county graveling it is gonna be a access. And with the, um, recent news of the development, that hundred and seventy-acre, or hundred and seventy-lot parcel there, potentially could be a lot more traffic there. So just consideration of how that traffic flow is gonna work, and adding five or six driveways on the Bluff Road, with all of that traffic coming out, um, from the Concordia area, from the new street coming in by the bridge, um, it's, uh, it's just gonna create more problems in that area, so.
Any questions?
All I have to say.
Seeing none, thank you.
Malabamba, fifteen sixty, two hundred and fifty-second. I live on the east side of two hundred and fifty-second, and just right up the hill from Thomas's addition there. Recently found out that our well is not registered with the state. The property that we moved into used to belong to Dave Jones, and the well was already there. So I am in the process of getting that registered. Our well is four hundred and eighty, uh, feet deep, so like, um, Diane said, the water is an issue there. You know, it's, it's deep at our place, so. Um, traffic is the other thing, there, our road has already got a lot of traffic, people flying by like crazy. Um, you add, you know, all those houses there too, and then on Bluff Road, that road is still busy too. So, um, just the concern of the traffic and, and the water.
Thank you. Jonathan, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Jonathan Janks, Seward County Chamber of Development Partnership, six sixteen Bradford Street. Um, you all have heard me talk about housing before. Um, but what I shared at the planning commission last night, um, as we look at our housing study, uh, between two thousand nineteen and twenty-three, there's a projected, uh, need of two hundred and forty-two housing units, um, in Seward. And, uh, we, uh, worked with Tim and Sarah to determine the current permits, uh, that we've had pulled so far for housing within that time, uh, two thousand nineteen to today, and we're at about a hundred and eighteen housing units. So you can kinda project out with the remaining time here, about, about a year and a half. And obviously, COVID didn't help any of this, of course, but what I'm here to say is that we do need more housing to continue to meet, uh, the demand that we have, and I think you can hear that there are people willing to move into town, and that, that's a good thing, who would ask for your consideration and support to continue to offer areas for our community to grow. And we do need all types of housing to support that growth.
Thanks, Jonathan. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number two? Seeing no one else, I will close the com, the public comment portion of the public hearing. Return to the council for any further discussion.
Education. With this being the ETJ.
ETJ?
J, say that really fast. At what point in time, if annexing out more that way, when does the water supply become the city's issue?
When we annex. If we annex a property predominantly, and Kelly can correct me, we need to be able to provide water, sewer, electric. Usually, electric is buying out whatever electric provider they have. Uh, and then our other utilities like streets, snow removal, police coverage. But you have to have water and wastewater there to annex them, or a plan to get it there as you proceed through phasing or otherwise. So we would have to be able to extend those utilities out to that point.
And in this case, the challenge is the creek, right? One of the challenges, if you were-
We had a very deep discussion about this today in Bluff Road, uh, not specific to this parcel or, or anything out that part east, but, um, the creek is one of them. It's predominantly wastewater, water with the new tower and other than the distance, as long as we loop feed and stuff. And I see Mike shaking his head, so catch me if I'm wrong, Mike. As long as we loop feed the system, we can get water pressure out there and build up the municipal water. I mean, we take water all the way to all those acreages or little development way out west. Um, and so, we can get water there, it's wastewater and getting through the, the geography of the ups and downs, whether you need lift stations, 'cause everything needs to go down gravity-filled to get to the wastewater treatment plant. So wastewater's probably our predominant one, the creek does not help that.
So just because we're in the ETJ does not hold us to providing them with water until we annex out that way?
And the, the purpose of the ETJ is to prepare your city and the surrounding areas to incorporate them over time, kind of based on our comprehensive plan. So you don't wanna set yourself up with a bunch of development that you put right in the way in your ETJ that you're gonna try and move through later. Lincoln's had a lot of problems with that on the south side of Lincoln, had all these acreages. And now they have to move through them and the spacing and all the other issues that are involved in that. You wanna try and think your way through. Again, our current comp plan doesn't show any development, right, Mike? In this area, for the foreseeable future, now. Things can change, just ask other communities around the state that start growing quicker than they thought.
It'll also allow you to have, um, conformity with your zoning as you move out in that direction as well, so you don't have goofy, um, zoning next to each other, that it has more of a, a flow to it as you typically would see in, in town. But, you know, for other communities, like larger communities, their ETJs are even larger. I think three miles for what, Lincoln, and four for Omaha? I think it's three and four for those two, so, but, but that's just for the same reason that we're dealing with it.
And in that ETJ, gosh, you gotta think about that. There isn't any requirements that have to be equalized with, like, the county per se? 'Cause the county, you can only have so many houses per so many acres and wells per so many acres. That's back to what our zoning regulations are because of where it falls in that.
We try, yeah, we try to follow our comprehensive plan and our zoning regulation book. And so most areas out here, we're looking at strictly an agricultural or rural residential, uh, based zoning. For the most part, doesn't mean that there aren't other ones that float around out there, but, uh, that's what we're looking for.
And Tim, they got to follow your, the building codes.
Yeah, they're required to follow everything with, as they would within the city.
ETJs are a bit of an anomaly, because if you ever talk to somebody that lives out in the area, they're kinda like, why don't you vote, uh, for people, but you're gonna tell me where I could put this outlet in my house? And I guess, exactly.
Hey, you're, pay me a permit.
Yes, we're gonna charge you for a permit to do it, so, you're welcome.
But you're still in the county.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you get into the issues we talked about with road maintenance, you know? We're approving developments out there, but we're not responsible for the road maintenance that may go on with that, so. But same thing in the county, they're approving different developments and stuff that may provide more traffic into our city, into the schools, everything else, and they're not responsible for our road maintenance. So, it's some of the give and take, looking at my county commissioner, but, um, and two fifty-second, for our friends that live on there, I, myself and Mike Onnaby were at the one and six-year plan discussion with the county this past week, two weeks ago. Uh, and mentioned the importance of two fifty-second and the county and the city working together to come up with a plan for the long-term development of that, so that we can have, you know, higher-quality roads that can handle the traffic. So if we need to come with a plan together to concrete it or asphalt it or put something better down than gravel that's washing away very quickly, then that's what we need to look at doing.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I would ask someone to, uh, introduce the ordinance.
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance to approve the plat entitled Bluff Road Acres, a plat of land located in the N-one, is it N-half or N-one-two? How you say that, Greg?
North half.
North half of the northwest quarter.
Yep.
Of section twenty-three, township eleven, north range three, east of the six PM. Seward County, Nebraska, as here and after set forth. To provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, and it says it's as ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with statutory rule?
I saw move. Second.
Moved by Streisand, second by Miller.
Your motion and second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting, voting in favor of Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, voting against Hendricks.
Again, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
So, move.
Second.
Moved by Coulterman, second by Miller.
Your motion and second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash two, be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, voting again, Hendricks.
Alright, thank you. Item number three, a public hearing, ordinance rezoning, property identified as Bluff Road acres from agricultural district AG to rural residential district RR. Tim?
Alright, again, as I said, that, uh, now to make a conforming to rural residential, we have to zone it from agricultural to rural residential. Agricultural's a minimum of twenty acres, rural residential, uh, is five acres or more. And so we have to, uh, do that for the co- conformity of zoning, uh, again, recommended by planning commission nine zero.
Any questions for Tim? This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing. If anyone from the public wish to comment on item number three. Seeing no one, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing, or return to the council for further discussion. Any questions or comments, or someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Alright. An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Seward, Nebraska, to rezone certain property within the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Seward, Nebraska. Now zoned as AG Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District. Specifically tracks the land south of Bluff Road and east of two hundred and fifty-second road to describe the property rezoned, to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, and it says it adds ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash three, and the title is hereby approved. Any motion to dispense with statutory rule?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Coulterman, second by Miller. Is any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
This is ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash three, would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted and read?
So, move. Second.
Moved by Beck, second by Miller.
Your motion and second, is any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, your ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash three be finally passed and adopted. Please register your votes, please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
And this is, I believe, the last ordinance for this evening, so any one final motion to make all the ordinances a part of the record?
So, move. Okay.
Moved by Camprith, second by Coulterman.
Motion and second, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
Alright, next we have administrative items. Agreement for professional engineering services with the Schimmer Associates Incorporated for preliminary and final design of storm sewer improvements for Park Avenue, Sixth through Eighth Streets and Bradford Street, Fifth through Tenth Streets. Mike, welcome.
Thank you, thank you, good evening, everybody. So you have, uh, before you, a thirty-four-page, uh, agreement for design services. Um, the total amount, hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty. A large engineering services contract essentially covers three different projects. Uh, one project would be storm sewer from the Cedar Street Detention Basin, Sixth and Cedar, uh, through to, uh, down Park Avenue to Eighth Street. A second would be Hillcrest from Ironwood and Seventh Street, uh, down Eighth Street, also to Park Avenue. And the third project would be primarily Bradford, uh, Street from Fifth Street to Twelfth Street, and includes a little bit of Roberts from Fifth and Sixth. Uh, so the last two projects, um, are recommended by the Department of Transportation as part of the Highway fifteen reconstruction project. That project's supposed to, uh, begin construction in spring of twenty twenty-four, complete by June of twenty twenty-five. One of these projects, Park Avenue, we hope to, um, complete prior to the start of that project. It's an extensive, uh, storm sewer work, the state has done some preliminary calculations. They anticipate, uh, needing another detention basin, another thirty-six-inch pipe beneath Park Avenue, which is likely gonna require Park Avenue to be ripped up between Sixth and Eighth Streets and replace at least half the pavement, but we don't know yet. And so the portion of the project on Bradford, uh, that likely, that storm sewer project that is typically off, uh, north of the curb, existing curb, uh, those plans are likely to be inserted in the state project. That contractor for the state road would bid, uh, would give us, uh, equivalent of a state bid, uh, project, unit cost on that, so we would attach that to it. The third project, we don't know exactly when we would have, it's on the one and six plan. We don't know exactly when we would do the storm sewer work on Hillcrest and, uh, Eighth Street. It is all interconnected, and so we do believe it's, um, uh, good to assign all three to a single engineering firm. Engineer, this is, uh, one system at one time.
Thanks, Mike. Any questions from the council?
How many, how many different engineering firms did you consider for this?
Uh, we considered a variety, didn't solicit quotes from, uh, any, any other firm other than Schimmer, but we used our typical four firms, uh, Olson, JEO, Schimmer, uh, to, um, evaluate in terms of, you know, who we distribute contracts to. And so, we're distributing contracts relatively evenly across, uh, those firms. And, um, they seen, we, uh, discussed this with, project with them, they came and visited, uh, we- Uh we walked the site with them and they gave us uh their proposal. We thought their proposal was, was incorrect, it was a little back and forth, we would have turned to another firm and asked them uh similarly for that, so.
So you're, you're not bidding it out, these projects?
The construction work will be bid out.
On professional services, the most we would do is a request for qualification, which is what we did with the wastewater plant. But that's an eighteen million dollar project with a million dollars in engineering services. Usually for design like the water tower, some of these other ones, we just kind of try to work with who got spread out on our different projects. Qualifications process would take us another probably at least two months, three months to get started and all the way through, so. We don't have any contractual obligations or requirements by state law to have bid out any professional services. Correct, Kelly?
Correct. Where's Park Avenue? I have not seen.
Park Avenue is the one out of the Cedar Street Basin at the bottom of the hill on highway, the low spot, with the little detention cell. Straight out of that to the west, it's Park Avenue. There's a little park on it.
Yes.
Yep. Right now, that sewer, storm sewer is so high in the grade that there's portions where you can actually see it in some of the yards and stuff and can touch it, because it's just so shallow.
The south side of Park Avenue, it looks like sidewalk, it's actually, but curved, it's actually the top of the tile that everybody's walking on, so.
So.
So, to expand on Ellen's question, not that I'm, I'm not proposing this, it's just a hypothetical, so. You don't go out for bids on these professional services because you're not required to, but the council could direct you to.
Yes.
Okay, does that help?
And I guess my thought is, we don't avail ourselves then of new companies or companies that will expand into the sewer. Or do they just by automatic come to you and say, hey, here we are?
It's similar to like SEH, when we added them to our fold, they come to us and let us know. There are not many left in, that work in the Nebraska area that would do this kind of work.
So the, yeah, three I mentioned, fourth was SEH, that my predecessor Jake, Jake Bosch now works for. Uh so, so uh we do evaluate their past work. Uh we evaluate their work for other cities, other types of projects. Uh we, we are visited by people from their firm trying to market their services, sell their services. I, I have checked, so I've looked at the number of hours and how they're assigned, how much is the project management? How much is to uh specific tasks? I look at the total, so this is thirteen hundred and fifty-two hours. And relative to the contract amount, a typical method of evaluation is the average rate is a hundred twenty-six dollars. And so it's not an exorbitant, nationally, that number is over a hundred and fifty dollars. Nebraska in general is a, a lower rate for engineering services. Uh as a whole, that hundred twenty-six looks good. The other thing we want to avoid with engineering services contract and, and bidding those is, is that what people will do is simply offer fewer services and less of a design and reduce hours. That's how they become competitive. And so then you have drive to the, to the bottom of uh how few hours can actually churn out a set of documents. There's a lot of issues with those type of projects. And so we're trying to evaluate them on these other metrics without uh actually forcing. It's, it's a time costly thing also to uh to bid out, but then try to establish what is the minimum number of hours. We have a difficult time internally for all the specialties required of saying, well, if they've got twenty-three hours for this certain task, is that really too high, should it be twenty-one, or does it need to be more, does it need to be thirty? I mean, we would have a hard time judging that. Uh so, and we would also in evaluation of, of competing bids, we'd have a hard time justifying, you know, selecting one person's selection of, of hours, right, the scope of work versus, versus another. You can look at, at general items and scope. We did evaluate the scope, they were actually were, their initial uh scope priced out at just over a hundred and fifty thousand. I felt it was missing some important elements, so I asked them to go back and price out these alternatives and revise it, and actually revise it upward. But I do think that these hours, this is also um a time and materials type of agreement where if it takes less time, they'll just bill what they uh what, what they incur and invoice us on a monthly basis.
Sure.
Is there, is there a, a list of recommended um engineering firms from DOT since this project's gonna have some DOT implications?
Uh I, I uh, I don't know the answer specifically on that, we, this is primarily a storm sewer project. And so the uh DOT aspect of it, ver- virtually all these firms have, that I've worked with, I've worked with all these in the past. And they do work with uh DOT standard documents, standard drawings and specifications and details. Uh so I'm not sure if the state actually has a, a list of uh engineering firms. Uh this, this is essentially, as Greg mentioned, it's a, it's a small list within the state that does this type of work. And historically, um the city has hired these firms for their projects. Some of these, Schimmer and JEO, they're assigned projects like the bike trail, Waverly Road, Carol K. The state actually has a, has a um, a selection process, right, there would be kind of, it's more turn and then they assign a project uh to that firm. So I do know that uh three, three of those in particular, I'm not sure of SEH, whether they are on that state list, but the other three are.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, are there any motion?
Make a motion to accept the contract.
Is there a motion, is there a second, is there a motion?
Moved by Colterman, second by Camprith.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, item number two, approval of specifications and contract documents for new well development of sewer wells, Southwest Three, South Four, and piping.
Tim?
We got everybody tonight.
Also get him in front of you.
I say welcome is not like you had a choice, so.
Uh Tim Rich State City of Seward. Uh we're looking at two sites for a new well development. The city of Seward owns a southwest site, southwest of town there, we own a section, four corners on that section. Uh one well is abandoned irrigation well, Southwest Three. We put a test well in that section over there and we tested that water uh three different times in the last two years. So that site there is Southwest Three, that we're looking at developing a well there. And our next site is, uh we were searching for the Dakota Aquifer, which we found and located on our south well field, south of the airport. Now that well is about five hundred feet deep and the water quality there is a really good, no nitrate or anything, so. That's really good, that's the best aquifer, you can find the best water right now. But we had to run a couple of test wells to find it and that was the second one and we found it, so. So we're looking at putting a well on that one first and then taking a look at Southwest Three.
Both of these wells have received permit?
Both of them have permitted already, been approved by the DNR and the NRD, both. So we're, we're go to start on the project.
Use your sticks to.
No.
My first time.
Sometimes that works. So we're real positive about the south well field over there. And um basically uh we would run that water probably straight to the reservoir if we had to, without any treatment. Would reduce a lot of cost.
So is three equally as good water quality as the other one?
Southwest Three is only a hundred and thirty-four feet deep. It is the same depth that there are other two wells, Southwest one and two we have there. There is no nitrate sign of the three samplings in the last two years. And both well companies agree that that shouldn't change, and that's the question that I asked. Uh the only problem in that area, it has a higher level of uranium and gross alpha. And there's ways, you, the RL plant takes that out, that's no problem. But the well companies can actually put a cap in there to seal off that blue clay, which that's where it comes in at the bottom, to lower those limits. But we kind of see that in a lot of our wells, the uranium and gross alpha can be an issue. So both wells are, sites are looking good.
Any questions or comments for Tim?
So with your number of, since Tim, you've got five wells in, in service right now?
We have a total of nine wells. And we use three this time of year to keep up with the flow and in the summertime, we can use five to six.
And so there's a west, there's, so you've got southwest and south, there's also a west, a number of west wells?
There's a west, yeah, southwest and a south well field.
Gotcha.
Yep.
So, so what, how many up for each, each field?
Uh we have two on Southwest well field, which produces the most water, but has the highest nitrates. And then the west well field, we have four, and then we have three on the south by the airport.
So Tim, this, these documents here would be sent out for bid, right, to the, to the different?
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Yep.
I didn't read it all, but it looks good to me.
I got to a hundred thirty-four, I didn't get to a hundred thirty-six.
You made it a hundred and thirty-two more than me.
One thing we've seen is uh Lane Western, Sergeant Drilling, they all use Chris Miller for their engineering, he's supposed to be going the best, so. I feel really comfortable that we found him and we're using him, so.
The other thing we'll want to look at long term as we, and the good part is, we're putting these wells in the current well fields, is just relooking at and discussing with the state, we have a wellhead protection area. And these are prominent, predominantly pull from the aquifer in the area that there is already protected. But once we start adding more municipal wells, at some point in the future, we'll want to revisit that to make sure that the areas on the surface that are covered by what we did years ago are reevaluated based on these new locations, so. But that's something down the line as we progress through the process.
So, Tim, when you said this would go directly to the reservoir, is that located in Southwest Marine Pool, or where, where is the reservoir?
The reservoir is at the RL plant, there's a seven hundred thousand gallon reservoir underground.
Okay, okay, so it just goes directly there and then?
Yeah, what's nice is this well will go right next to South One, we'll just tap right into the same line.
Oh, okay.
And we can either blend, we can do what we want with it from there, so.
Any other questions or comments, or are there any motion?
I'll move to approve the specifications and contract documents.
Second.
Motion by Camprith, second by Streisand, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes, please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Colterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, item number three, consideration of resolution to set sewer rates based on January, February, twenty twenty-two consumption for a twelve month period starting April twenty twenty-two. Okay.
Yeah, this was an item that was brought to my attention at the last meeting, at the end of the meeting, council member Camprith came to me and asked, um are we still setting our sewer rates based on consumption of water in the winter? And were those months January, February, and March? Uh and I said, I believe they are, um and we had a discussion about with the current drought that people have been going out and watering their lawns and turning on the irrigation and turning it off and even us going out and watering ballfields and things like that in March early as recommended to get your grass going. And so he quoted about having us go back and look at with all that extra irrigating and people watering in March, that would impact their sewer bill for their entire year, based on the way we calculate your sewer bill, which is an average of your water usage, January, February, March. And he said, if we, if that is how it is, can we look at, or is there even a way to try this year only eliminate March? So it would not have such an impact on setting your bill for the whole year, even though the water that you irrigate with in April through the rest of the season doesn't go in the sewer. So I said, we would go back and talk to administration, check with the billing department, and then check in with Kelly and see if we can even pull that off. Uh I did speak with Kirsten in the billing department about how she creates that report within our billing system and also our metering system. And she, after some finagling, did report back that she could create a report that would just read and average out January and February only. And so I let council member Camprith know that that was possible, but I didn't know exactly, since it's actually written in the city code to do it this way, how we even get around that. And so then I sent it all to uh city attorney Kelly Hofschneider and said, Kelly, how do you want me to do this if we were to pull this off? And his recommendation was, since it is a temporary item, not a permanent change, that a resolution such as this will allow us to do a one-time temporary change to exclude March. Um Mary asked me to do some calculations on what it would save. On the high end, I, I went and looked at different residentials that do irrigation. If somebody pulled off what they would irrigate in April, but in March, it would increase their bill nine dollars a month for the rest of the year. If we leave March in there. Now, that was before it rained and it snowed and probably slowed people down from going out there and going ballistic like they will once April gets rolling in May. But it would save people, they wouldn't have that, such a big increase because we were charging for what they might have been irrigating in March. So on the high end, nine, probably closer to three to five bucks per month, so. That's how it works, uh we didn't have any issues by the administration doing this and we can pull it off technically, we just need to make sure we run the report correctly and then assign it that way for the next twelve months.
As long as we use this metric, we just have to have something in the metric. But let's, as to which months, it's up to you all that said that, and you can make it temporary, permanent, or do nothing. But we want to at least bring that to you, so you have to consider that.
If you're making a permit, we would have to draft you an ordinance to change city code.
Yeah, tonight, tonight you're gonna do temporary.
Yeah, my intention was to make it permanent, just since this is such an unusual dry year, just make the impact a little less on people for the rest of the year. Because I think the city with the increased water usage is, is gonna be probably a wash for the city, pun intended. You know, with the increased water use in March, you normally wouldn't have had. So, thanks for all your work on it, Craig, appreciate that. Thank you, Kelly. I'll introduce resolution.
Well, I think we make sure of any, this, yeah, okay, so. I'll make sure there's no more discussion, I'll hopefully do that.
Well, so for the current calculation, we're looking at January, February, and March?
Yes, we take all three of them, add them together, average it, and then that sets your rate.
Right.
But it is, it is a, I use, I use my neighbor, that's, I just pulled his, sorry, I won't say name names. I pulled my neighbor and it jumps from a pro, I think it's cubic feet is our measurement for water. But it jumps from a standard residential house for people, they use about five hundred in those three months, cubic feet units. It ju, it triples in April when they start irrigating. And that is not a substantial, that, I mean, that's not, we're not talking to acreage or anything, it's a standard residential lot for us here in the main part of the city. And it triples in April. And so you add that tripled one over the top of it, you can see how you get a decent jump. It would, it was normally a forty-one dollar sewer rate, it would jump to like fifty dollars every month.
Right. Well, that's, I'm just looking at my properties right now, on how it's averaged. So that's how I was just looking at, if we're looking at possibly making a change to where we wouldn't have to do it, would we consider December, January, and February for those three months rather than the first three months of the year? Would that make a difference?
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't matter, we don't irrigate in December, that's for sure.
Right.
I don't, I don't know why they selected those, I don't know if it's because of quantifications, it's not revenue, because we don't budget on January. So we'd have to do some research on when they selected those or see if most other utility or water wastewater utilities do, do this method. Um they, they don't just charge everybody for sewer rates on the water and going down the sewer, so. We can do some research and take a look, and if you want us to adjust it permanently or slide it to more of the winter, we can do that too. That might occur.
It'd have to be an ordinance, right?
That would have to be an ordinance. We might get some more revenue out of it because people will start irrigating sooner. I know they wait until March, April first and build, but, because we were getting calls, hey, when, when can we turn our sprinklers back and build for it? April first, okay.
I, I'm, I'm in favor of just trying this out, just for this one time.
And take a look at, you know, we wish to later on, but this makes sense for the moment.
Yeah, I mean, I have no, nothing, uh, for just changing it to January and February for this time, so we can just go through with the resolution, but I think if it would be possible to look at it and setting it for those three months, because you know there's very odd chance, although it is Nebraska, of irrigating in February or December, but, yeah.
The other one that's strange, I mean, you can come up with all kinds of scenarios. You could also say, well, if you get too far in the winter, maybe we're getting some snowbirds, and you're going to get a bunch of people that are just not there and running nothing in the winter, and now we don't catch them at all. And so their sewer rate is like literally nothing, when they're using a ton when they're back. It's, you know, six of one, half a dozen another, but we can go around and look. I mean, we can go ask other utilities or try to find the research back in the history of the city, why they set it to these three months way back when. It's a fun Derek project. Why not? He's not here. That hit the tape.
So any other discussion? Seeing none, council member Camprith has introduced the resolution. Resolution has been introduced, and it does it to add resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Someone.
Second.
Moved by Beck, second by Hendricks. Okay.
Either one.
That's why I went.
There's a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please pay the votes.
Voting in favor, Wilken, Beck, Camprith, Coulterman, Miller, Streisand, Hendricks.
All right, see, make a report.
Uh, bunch of stuff, just kicking into spring now. I think golf course is fully up and running, carts. I called Dan right in the middle of moving cups yesterday onto the greens, and, uh, he charged up the sprinkler system. He's been out there hand watering the greens for the last month almost, I think. Uh, I think the irrigation system is coming online at the baseball fields as well, and I know that they're out, I think Concordia was out scrimmaging today. Had a game going, so there's a lot of traffic down there. So that's going on. Um, we, I know I sent out the email on it. We are working tons of hours in time on our thirty day project on East Seward Street, and so, um, I won't reiterate everything, but just today alone, we met for two and a half hours with NDOT talking about access points and all along the corridor of East, or Thirty-four, east of town. Uh, we also met with them on speed limits, and met with them on, uh, whole litany of issues. Also some storm sewer stuff and sanitary things that are going on down by that development that are, are issues, has nothing to do with directly.
Can you just clarify? I want to make sure everybody's on the same page with this. We cannot all attend the meetings, so is there a direction of who needs to be there?
My recommendation would be is the council members that represent those two wards, like we did last time.